I hereby call to order this meeting of the Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, November 29, 2023. Ann, could you please call the roll? Mr. Marshall.
Here.
Mr. Palatier.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Lane.
Here.
Mr. Matthews.
Here.
Chairperson Natigan.
Here.
We have quorum. Also in attendance tonight is our village attorney, our pickerel. The first item we have is approval of the regular meeting minutes of November 9, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve those minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? There are none. Ann, please call the roll. Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Palatier.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Lane.
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews.
Aye.
Chairperson Natigan.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Next, we have visitors petitions, citizen requests on communications. Is there anyone present who would like to speak at this time about an item that is not on the agenda? Anything not on the agenda? Okay. Then we can move on to the liaison report. Ann? I don't have a report. No report, okay, moving right along. Old business. This is item APZ 23-0008, the planned unit development for 28 East Burlington Streets. This is a continuation of a public hearing to consider an application from Lion Development 2 LLC for a special use permit for a planned development Burlington Street Apartments, including any applicable preliminary plan in the B2 RC sub-district on the four properties located at 28 and 30 East Burlington Street. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The notice of public hearing and other application materials were accepted as exhibits on September 27, 2023. There are some new application materials which will be marked as a third exhibit. Is there a motion to accept these exhibits?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ann? Thank you. In page eight of the packet, which is page two of the memorandum, there is a section that's titled revisions and notes. Since we've already discussed this application extensively, I'd just like to point out a few things for your consideration. Point four in the applicant's response letter addresses building underground parking, but on pages eight and nine of their response letter, you can see a diagram of that, which wasn't called in their response, and I want to bring that to your attention. The lighting plan was revised, and that is no longer an exemption that they need to ask for a condition of, a conditional approval of. Though nearly all the plants and trees and landscape plant are on the preferred plant materials list, those that are not on the list are native. Traffic study is not required for this application due to low volume of traffic. The project will add to an arterial street designed to handle a high volume of traffic. The site distance exhibits on sheet EX2 in the preliminary engineering plans show that visibility from those drive aisles, and then the village engineer would review the traffic control plan as part of the building permit application. The township assessor provided an estimate of the property taxes that the building would generate. The reason that the Village Center is on that assessment is that's the comparable building that they use. That was most appropriate building in terms of age, function, size, and location within the township. And then there was a question raised during the September 27 meeting about how much space would be available for the drive aisle between, for the Village Center, and I took a photo of that and included that in the packet. So you'll see that as an attachment in case there's any question about that. Directly below that section are lists of the exemptions that are being requested. All of these should be familiar, but I just wanted to point out the item number five, ground floor residential units, which we discussed last time. Item number six is fiberglass windows in residential units. Number seven is aluminum windows in the storefronts of the ground floor live-work units. The approved material is wood or wood-clad aluminum. And then fiber cement siding or panels as building material, and the applicant brought samples of those for you to take a look at. And then the other issue is unit size. There's a requirement in the zoning code that one-bedroom units need to be 900 square feet. The zoning code doesn't specify how to measure that 900 square feet. It's the administrator's determination that that should be basically the finished wall in, similar to, I guess, how you would think of a condo ownership, where it starts at the drywall and then kind of moves in, since it has to do with living space, not the bulk of the building. So just to clarify that, in the administrator's determination, the units are slightly less large than they need to be, and there's a summary below there, so it doesn't quite meet the requirements. So the exemption would be listed there. Three two-bedroom units, another three two-bedroom units which are a different size, three one-bedroom units, and one of the live-work units are undersized. Ten of the 22 units are slightly below that size. I'd be happy to go into the details on that if you want to, it's a little technical, but and those were the main things that I wanted to note. Also, we did receive a letter objecting to the development with some notes on the development. I addressed those on pages four and five of the memo. I'd be happy to go into those in more detail, but I didn't want to take away from the applicant's time or time for folks from the public to comment, so.
Oh, and I had one quick question on the earlier piece.
Absolutely.
Would the apartment sizing would only come into play in the live-work unit if it were to be approved as a livable space?
I think if it were a live-work or residential space, because there's a residential component to that, to me, that would make sense to me.
Okay.
Yeah. If you have any questions for me now, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise you can hand it over to the applicant to make their presentation.
I have one question.
Yes.
Could you just state for the record, so we all know, what did the assessor, what was the assessor's determination?
Oh, sure.
I'm having some trouble finding it.
Sure, so let me scroll to that. Page in the packet, let me find that for you. It's the last page of the packet, or of the applicant's recent email. That's page 78, if you're following along electronically. And so there's a breakdown of estimated property taxes for the building, based on a $10 million value, which is estimated. There's a 10% residential level of assessment, and that breaks down to estimated projected property taxes of $383,000 and, excuse me, $383,033. And the comparison with the Village Center was that the generated property tax from that building is $453,940 estimated for 2022. The difference between the two, according to the assessor, there are a few factors. One is that there are exemptions taken by owners in the Village Center, which lowers the assessed value. If you rent, you can't take that exemption, so you don't have the benefit of that. The other is the larger amount of commercial space that's in the Village Center, so considerably more commercial space than what we're looking at. Thank you. Sure. Any other questions for Ann? All right, thank you. Our petitioner would like to present.
Yeah. Thank you, Ann. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for having us back. I think Ann described some of the kind of changes and also kind of addressed some of the concerns that came out of our last meeting, but I'd like to just go through kind of, and go through some of the other things that maybe entered and addressed, starting with kind of just the architectural revisions, and there aren't many, but one of the things we did is add the new wall that was requested, or that's in the zoning ordinance that was previously not there, so that's the new application, and renderings reflect that. Talking about the unit sizes, I know there was just descriptions here of how we measure unit area versus how the determination was made, but regardless, one of the three-bedroom units, so there was three units, three one-bedroom units in the original application, that was 750 gross square feet, so we took out a storage room and increased those three units to be 915 gross square feet. I think they still might be below the threshold, but they are quite a bit larger. Now, the other thing is materials. We brought the materials for review. That's the fiber cement panel that would be at the top, at the setback, and also the corners areas, so that's just on the fifth floor. And then the fiberglass window, this is just a sample section, so it's not the full profile, but this is kind of the material, just for comparison, to what a kind of clad window would be. And then I just want to point out, I think, one of the variance requests was that the ground floor windows were supposed to be wood or aluminum clad wood. We are doing aluminum windows, aluminum storefront windows that are going to have similar character to the upper floors, but I believe that's the same storefront system that's being used at the Village Center and really, you know, across at the adjacent kind of commercial properties, so that would be kind of in line with what's there now in the vicinity. I think the other thing we addressed is just we clarified that the windows, the upper-floor windows, would be a combination of fixed and double-hung. You know, obviously the fixed portion would be up high, double-hung would be the lower windows. And then the height comparison, we included a height diagram which was requested by the staff, and just comparing the heights, so the Village Center, the peak of the roof is at approximately 49.8, as compared to the very top parapet of the fifth floor at this development would be 64 feet. And I'd just like to point out that if you look at the penthouse plan or the fifth floor plan, at least 50% of the building actually sets back at that level. So if you look at the lower corners, it's actually at 49 feet, and that's about the same height as the peak of the Village Center roof. So I think what's being focused is just this element in the front that's tall, and obviously the roofs behind it, but there are portions at the street level and surrounding residential properties which are lower, which kind of, you know, if you're looking from the street, you would only really perceive the four-story portion. And then Ann also addressed the basement parking, so we looked at basement parking. We provided two diagrams in there that kind of shows the layout of what the possible basement level could look like. So because of the ramp and, you know, there are certain minimum kind of requirements for the ramp slope, and with that in mind, and also that you need the head height on the first floor, there isn't as much, I guess, maneuverability and area in the basement, and also you lose some square footage on the first floor to the fact that we would lose four parking spaces, four indoor parking spaces, and then also three residential units to accommodate basement parking. So I think when we discussed it with the owner, it's just, I think that the cost of going underground plus the loss of the units and parking, I think just doesn't work. Going back to some of the site comments, we updated the photometric plan, so that complies with zoning now, which is, I think, 1/10 of a foot candle at the property line with cutoff light fixtures. In your packet, we included the green features maintenance plan. I think it includes the maintenance. They're actually on the civil drawings for the permewell pavers, and then there was also a specific product that we did as a basis of design on the drawings for the green roof trays that would be on the fourth level terrace, and we also included the maintenance plan for that. To address, there was, on the last meeting, I think, one of the residents brought up the utility concerns, and those, we went back and looked at it again, and they are identified, all the underground utilities are identified on the survey, and our building is outside of those. We went back to the surveyor and had him double-check that there's ovisements for those utilities, and he couldn't identify any, so, but to that, and Aaron can speak more to it, but we added a note basically that any utility disruptions need to be coordinated with utilities, and we, you know, if there is any relocation necessary, which we don't believe there are, because our building footprint is actually pretty far away from those, so we don't think there's any concern there. In the packet also, we included a truck turn exhibit. I think last time we just showed a passenger car kind of circling around. Aaron revised the exhibit to show an actual garbage truck, and that's, I think, he said that he didn't have like a, I forget what it was.
Yeah, so we provided additional turning exhibits in addition to a site distance exhibit showing how, what the line of sight would be for vehicles exiting and entering the property, in addition to those turning exhibits for both passenger vehicles as well as a garbage truck. The garbage truck, it would be similar in size to a larger U-Haul or other moving type vehicle, really anything larger than that, it's just not going to be, not going to be realistically trying to access the site.
That's right. I was trying to get to the moving truck part of it, so the moving is, you know, a box truck like a U-Haul truck would be able to get around the site in the back. And then I think the other concern from the commissioners last time was just, you know, we were talking about the green kind of high efficiency or sustainable systems, and we didn't really define them. So I went back and put together kind of just a chart, and it's, again, not an exhaustive kind of list, but just pointing out some of the main kind of systems in the building and also appliances that we would be using, and how we were better than the code, better than the energy code in some cases, you know, better than what LEED baseline is, or better kind of what federal standards are. So I'm not going to go through the entire list, but just to point out, for example, on the roof, the energy, the Illinois, or I should say Illinois International Energy Conservation Code, which is adopted by the state of Illinois, prescribes that the roof R-value be 30, so we're proposing to do an R-value of 35, which is approximately 16% better than what the actual energy code states. For the walls, we're proposing, again, depending which option you choose, you can go R-20 for the cavity for the actual wall insulation, and you can have an R-3.8 continuous, meaning it goes on the outside of the wall and it covers the entire sheathing. So we're proposing, because of our stud depth, we could fit an R-21 with an R-6.9, so again, that's an improvement of 5% and almost 80%, just because from 3.8 to 6.9. The windows, again, the energy code minimum or prescribed are U-3.8, so U-value of .38, I'm sorry, U-value of .38 for the fixed windows, and operable windows would be .45. And the window system we were proposing, fiberglass Pella Imprevia, would be a U-2.7 for the fixed windows and .31 for the operable windows, which is an improvement of close to 30% over what the actual energy code is. And then on the water reduction, so the, there's no code per se, I think there's federal standards for what the minimum or maximum, I guess, gallons per minute prescribed for various kind of indoor plumbing fixtures, but we went back to kind of what LEED, which is a kind of a green standard that's being used a lot in building construction, and they specify kind of the minimum you would need to use as far as either gallons per minute for faucets and showers, or gallons per flush for toilets. So they prescribed a 1.6 gallons per flush for toilets. We're proposing a water sense fixture would be 1.28 gallons per flush, which is approximately 20% reduction in water usage. And then for faucets, they say the minimum should be 2.2. We're proposing 1.5 gallons for faucets, and then showers, 2.5 versus 2.0. So those are just some of the kind of sustainable features. And then I think the public benefits, we stated those before, what those would be, and we provided a kind of, you know, a little bit more explanation on what those public benefits are, but just to go through kind of an outline, it would be obviously filling a void in downtown. It's an underutilized lot, you know, it would bring vitality to downtown with the additional live-work units. Obviously, the landscape and the paving would be enhanced along the sidewalk to kind of continue that same standard that was established at the Village Center. Increased stormwater storage, I think we touched on it last time, there's specific numbers in there, and if anyone has questions on that, I think Aaron can expand on the actual percentage improvement in stormwater detention or runoff. Obviously, it's a department building. I think we, one of the benefits is kind of providing housing that's maybe in demand right now that hasn't been filled in this area especially. There's just a lot of older housing stock that might not be accessible in some areas because it was built, you know, long before kind of the advent of ADA codes and the Accessibility Acts. So I think this is an elevated elevator building, 20% of the units will be adaptable, meaning that if someone has kind of mobility restrictions, we would be able to adapt those units for them, lowering counters, you know, basically making the bathrooms more accessible than what's required as a minimum. And I think that goes in hand with kind of providing housing stock maybe for an aging population in the village. What we found on some of our other jobs is that there are people in the village in areas that they want to kind of live in the same area, but they're not finding kind of the apartment and the lifestyle they want. So I think this would provide that, just because it does have kind of a modern apartment feel with kind of more the amenities that people look for, you know, in apartments currently. And I think just the last thing was the EV charging space is obviously just, you know, pollution reduction and being kind of a good steward, I guess, on that. So that's, that's all I have to cover. Again, if you guys have any questions.
On the accessible units, that 2%, where are those units located?
So we'll follow what the Accessibility Code states, but basically they have to be dispersed amongst the different unit types. So for example, if we have one, two, and three-bedroom units, each of those types has, there's at least 20% of each of those types that have to be accessible, and then you have to provide them in locations throughout the building. For example, you have to have some like on the, you know, second floor, third floor, fifth floor, different views, so one might have to be in the back. So we haven't determined that, but that the code kind of stipulates that you can't just like group them on the ground or on the first, second floor, and that's where they are. You have to kind of put them throughout the building, just because of, I think, you know, people might have different kind of living preferences. Someone might like the street view, so, and if they have mobility issues and you don't have a unit that faces the street, it's kind of like you're discriminating, but if you're, you know, so the code is trying to kind of accommodate as many, I guess, preferences as they can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I had a question about the number of fully accessible units. It says 2%. Does that mean one unit?
2%? Yeah, it would have to be just one unit, yeah. So that's fully accessible, meaning that at move-in, you know, there's certain things that you have to meet, for example, just the basic things is like lower counters, roll-in sinks, so someone who is in a wheelchair, they'll be able to use it right away. The 20%, so this is more of like an Illinois accessibility requirement, and those units are basically made so they're easily changeable, like if, you know, if the owner has a renter comes in and, they don't even have to be in a wheelchair, but they can say like, oh, like, you know, I can't, I have a hard time reaching this handle for the shower. Well, the handle for the shower is already moved closer to the, you know, where they would be reaching in. You know, the counters, they're not lower, but by removing, you know, legs or something, the counters can be easily adapted to that, so that's kind of the, yeah, basically the adaptable means like you can change it, you can make it more accessible without making any structural changes to the unit itself, so you can move walls and plumbing inside walls and things like that.
Thank you.
I assume, and I would have rathered that you did it this way, that you are rounding up when you look at those percentages?
For the adaptable units? Yes, I think typically that's what we've done, and I'm not sure if I stated the number of units we would show, or I just listed percentages.
You just list the percentages. It's understood, but it would have been preferable to just list the number of units. With regards to the windows on the lower floor, are those operable at all?
Yeah, we would have some operable windows, because if those are live-work units, we would be required to have those operable, yeah, we would make them operable.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
I had a couple of questions, if no one else does right now. One of the issues with the building is the height of it, and I was wondering if the applicant would consider flipping the organization of the building, you know, the interior also has to be flipped, so that the very highest point of the building is not adjacent to the other residential building, and instead, what you just mentioned about the height being almost a full story less for much of that elevation, that western elevation.
I think architecturally that can work. I don't know, Pat, if you have any thoughts on that? I mean, we haven't explored it, I guess.
I've thought about it. I'm not interested in switching it, no.
Okay, is there any reason why you want to share why you're not interested?
Because architecturally, when we laid that out, that was the way that it worked best for the building itself.
Like the appearance from the street or something, is that what you're thinking?
The view of the different units and all that.
Okay. And another issue I had, or another set of questions I had, was I appreciate a lot of what you have done as far as what we can call the green incentives, the green efforts, and the walls, the window packages and the windows, they look excellent to me. But I was wondering if you were familiar with this ComEd's current incentive program for new construction of multifamily units in this area? Because they have sort of a whole list, which I think what you have so far proposed is more than compliant with in many ways, but there are a few things that aren't mentioned, like the furnace and a few other things, like advanced thermostats, smart thermostats, and a few other things.
Yeah, yeah, I did list the furnace, that wasn't one of the things I went through, but I think we were proposing a 90% efficiency versus the 80, that's.
I think for that one, what they propose is, well, what they're working off of is the 2021 IECC.
Okay.
And they just say 92% efficiency or greater. I mean, I think you guys are very close to many of them.
I think that's something, yeah, yeah.
But I was wondering if there'd be, you know, any amenability to going through that as sort of checklist of we could meet these green incentives put out by ComEd.
Okay.
And that, I don't know if you would at this point qualify for that incentives program, I don't know if the application has to be got in by the end of this year, or how that works, but it seems like a good neutral arbiter of these kinds of provisions.
Before we continue, I neglected to swear you in at the beginning of this, so please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Just to clarify, everything you've said so far has been true as well?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And everyone else who wants to swear as well. Okay, why don't we, anybody who does swear, we could swear everyone in at one time if you'd like to.
Yes.
So anyone who will be speaking, asking questions, comments, anything like that, please raise your right hands. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
I do, yes.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, we can go through that list and see, you know, what, what we comply with, I guess, and what we can, because like I said, this list is not exhaustive, obviously, but something like the smart thermostat, I think we probably provide them anyway because it's something that everyone's tending to.
Doing that is very popular, right?
Doing anyway, and it's kind of an amenity, you know, that I think a lot of people are looking for anyway, so it's kind of like the EV charging spaces, yeah.
Okay. And then, oh, the EV charging spaces, I thought that was good, four, I think is a good number for that. And then as far as like another issue with, I have a question. How is the heating going to be handled? Is it, they're going to, there's obviously going to be some heating for the common areas, but then otherwise everyone will have their own?
Yeah, it'll be an individual furnace inside your unit with like an individual thermostat that you can control. And same thing with water heaters, you have your own individual water heater, so it'll be, everything would be by unit. And then the commons, common areas are really limited. Parking garage is usually just tempered to, you know, like sixty degrees or something like that. They don't, you know, heat it, you know, to like seventy-two or normal temperatures. And then the lobby, same thing, but I think the lobby would be more like a split system or some kind of maybe electric heater, because again, it's not big, but that's, we haven't gone that far. But I know the units for sure, you know, that's kind of what, what's the standard we've been doing.
Okay, all right. And then as far as appliances, I would just say that you could probably do a little bit better as far as being even better than the Energy Star, I mean, because I've been, I know something about appliances lately, I've been looking at a lot of them and just, some of them could be, and still be very nice unit, very nice.
Yeah.
Again, you guys have price points and you have packages, you're going to purchase and all that.
And with the appliances even like, you know, there's differences, and they might be labeled Energy Star, but there is a big difference in those actually, so like one washer might meet Energy Star, but it's like barely meeting it, another might be actually exceeding it by a lot.
It'd be nice to see like a commitment to doing maybe a little bit better than Energy Star.
We could, yeah, I mean, we, you know, the one thing I'm not showing is like cut sheets for these, but we could submit an example of like, this is the actual dryer or better than we would be submitting if that's something the commissioners would like to see.
Okay, I think that would be nice. I mean, again, like refrigerators and stuff, there can be a vast difference and still be very nice units.
Yeah.
And then I assume this is at some point in one of your materials, you said something about considering being this all-electric, I assume this will be dual fuel, be electric and...
Yeah, I mean, I think the reason I didn't mention that, because I think there was some pushback, like we're just saying, but because we're so early in this, like Pat is open to it and we'll explore it, but obviously like we can't say like it's going to be, so I, I don't have, I guess, any more clarity on that at this point, yeah.
All right. Okay, I don't think I have any other questions.
Okay. That all are our questions for the petitioner? Okay. In that case, we can move on to our public questions. So if you'd like to ask any questions, have any comments, anything to say about the petition, please come up to the podium and give your name and address, and if you haven't been sworn in, please let me know and we'll swear you in at this time. At this time, please come up to the podium if you have anything to say.
Hey, everybody. Ed Swiderski, I'm at thirty-seven Long Common. I was, I had to leave the last meeting early, I had my three-year-old daughter with me, and unfortunately I had to leave early, but that was, the unfortunate part was, was actually that I missed out on some statements that were made that were clearly unchallenged related to the characterization of twenty-eight East Burlington being a, I believe it was made a couple of comments, this gentleman here, and then Jachlan made a comment about that the lot being a parking lot. The lot is not a parking lot, it's, it's pretty clear, right? If you look at the land, it's a green space, and up until about sixty or ninety days ago, there was, there were mature trees on the property that were, were cut down in one day. So that, that area provides a natural barrier to the residential properties along Long Common. And so my point is, did anybody on the committee even walk the property, or, or, you know, what, what was the process there? Because you approved the rezoning, or at least you approved the recommendation to rezone the property without actually looking at the property, I guess? Can you help me understand how that, that decision was made, or? Because our well-being's are at stake, right? I mean, my, my bedroom is thirty feet from a parking lot. It already get horns and car doors and industrial vehicles being pulled in and out all day from the property that's already being managed by this, this gentleman. So...
Excuse me, I don't manage the property next door.
The developer, the proprietor?
I'm sorry, gentlemen, we can't have back and forth.
Well, I didn't, I'm speaking to you, so...
I'm just correcting you, I don't manage the property next door.
Who does manage it?
I'll manage it.
Please?
One at a time, everyone get a chance to speak.
So, that, that's my question.
Let's make sure that's good for everybody.
That's good for everybody, everyone get a chance to speak.
Okay. Please get to the other side.
I would just like to understand how the process was, what the process was for that, because I, I don't understand how, you know, someone could vote to recommend, recommend something, a zoning change in the village. Take your job seriously. If you're here and you're appointed to do these jobs, then do them.
Thank you for your comments.
Well, I had a question too, is anybody going to answer that, or?
What is, what is the question?
The question is, what is the process for approving a rezoning recommendation? I mean, do, do you look at the property? Because if not, maybe do that going forward.
Well, it is true. It is true, he was saying that, that property was never used as a parking lot, never had gravel on it, never had cars on it. The garage, one of the questions that was asked on it earlier was how old was the garage? And I can give you a little bit of background of how...
Sir, would you mind giving us your name and address, please?
Oh, my, my name is Thomas Barr, I'm at twenty-five Long Common.
Thank you.
So I'm right next to Village, I literally live in the shadow of Ten Burlington, okay? So, yeah, that property was, was subdivided in the mid-seventies. The owner of the property was a doctor, had a lot of stuff, and had a garage in the back. And when he sold the house, he subdivided the property so he had a place to store his stuff. So there was never really, that was never used as parking, as part of a business. It was never, it was never covered with gravel, and as was pointed out earlier, that up until recently, there was a fair amount of wo, it's trees and things like that that were cut down, you know, waking up to a chainsaw that really cut most of the stuff down at that point in time, but prior to that, that wasn't the case. You know, it ends up ultimately, the village at some point made it so you couldn't do that anymore. And I'm not sure when that exactly was put in place, but I do know that sometime after that, and certainly over twenty years ago, you wouldn't have been able to go and take and subdivide a piece of property like that. So, just kind of backing up what he's saying there. One of the things I have a question for is really the village, first I wanted to go and say an apology to Ann here, who's been very helpful towards me and very cooperative, and I made a statement in a document that I sent you guys, that said that, she said that there were no utilities in the property in the back of it, between it, and that's not true. She did, she, I, I've gone and watched the video of this now three times, okay? And, but she didn't jump in either. She certainly made me aware of the fact that the plot drawing shows the utilities, which now the engineer has also said, he's now looked at the drawings and they're on there, but certainly during the last meeting, it was stated that they were not aware of any underground utilities there. And one of the questions was put out is that, could we actually go and put those utilities underground, and actually they already are? They just, when they built the building, Ten Burlington or Village Center, they didn't want to have poles and wires going past people's windows. So I went along with the fact that, of putting utilities underground so that they didn't have that issue. My, one of my major concerns though is, is that as with a lot of the other buildings in town here, or a lot of the lots in town, the utilities go between the lots. So if you have a lot, the back of your lot against the other back of another lot, there's utilities that go through there, and I don't know if that's a legal easement or whatever that is, but my concern is if you glue this property together and some other internet company comes or something like that, will I be able to go and run, will I have a right to be able to go and run stuff through that space? You know, I mean, the stuff I have right now may be allowed to be there, but who knows what's going to happen at some point in the future? And certainly, when they subdivided my property, which was the Miller subdivisions, that's why I had some understanding as to what was going on, when they built Village Center, is that I have a very clear easement from the back around, there's a five-foot easement all the way around, so I can go and get utilities into my property. But now we've got, if you go and glue that together and we have utilities that go through there, am I going to have a problem if some new utility is needed and I don't have an easement through there? So certainly, like I said, I've seen it done in the past where they, where the drawings have showed a clear utility easement, and none of the drawings have, have that right now. Another thing that happened as we were talking about was that, everybody were talking about a four-story allowed and five-story as a special, special use. You know, twenty years ago, I was, I'm kind of in a unique position, I was right at twenty, I'm at twenty-five Long Common, right on the edge of the Central Business District, and I also own business property on the other end at forty-three East Quincy. So the building now that's actually the Recreation Center, actually was originally my building, and I bought it off the village. And originally, when I bought the piece of property, the village came, the village gave me a whole list of things that I could do with the property, and through the rezoning process really kind of hemmed me in, so that I was very limited as to what I could do on that property. So certainly I was, I paid a, a financial price for this rezoning, and as I've mentioned before, the original zoning height for the village downtown Riverside was twenty-seven feet. That was what was originally allowed. And one of the things with zoning is, is that it gives people an understanding as to what can be done and what can't be done. You know, certainly now we have a three, I have a three-story, a four-story building next to me, and there was a lot of discussion. In fact, I actually ran for trustee as part, as part of all that stuff that went through twenty years ago, and didn't win. I got thirty-eight percent of the vote, but you need fifty-one percent. And one of the things is, they made sure they pushed through the zoning so that that was not something that was a political issue, because it was really a hot potato. And there was never any discussion of a five-story building, never. There were, there were proposals for a five-story building, in fact, there may have even been proposals for a six-story building, but it was a non-starter. One of the things is, I know that now, I did ask the question, and when did the change take place in the village to go from four, from allowing a three-story building with a four-story building as a special use? And from watching the video a couple of times, I get the feeling, my understanding is, and certainly you guys know because you were involved in it, that it was sometime at the beginning of this year that it went through. And when this came about, you know, I was sent a letter, then when we did the rezoning on downtown, I was sent letters. When we went from allowing three stories to four stories, and ultimately five stories, I was never sent anything, and none of the other people were, because they're not aware of it either. We were not allowed to go provide any public comment as to what that is. Now, you may have put some of the information in newspapers and things like that, but, you know, I know that at the beginning of the last meeting, it was pointed out that there's certain state protocol that you're supposed to follow. And certainly on the last meeting that you did, you provided that state protocol and made sure that there were letters sent out. Originally, those letters were certified. A letter I got was just a letter in original mail, and I, when I actually talked to Ann after that, and I actually returned one of the letters to her that was stuck to another one that I had. So there was no guarantee that everybody got the letters they were supposed to get. So, you know, I, I certainly have a problem with the scale, I certainly think it still should have been three stories, the Village Center, and I know people on the fourth story wouldn't appreciate that, but, you know, I think that it should have really only been a three-story building. As part of it twenty years ago, I actually went around to other village, villages around to go and see what did they look like, okay? And, you know, when you go and look at transit-oriented development, it's almost like a bowl. Usually the Central Business District is usually no more than two stories. I just had dinner yesterday or lunch a couple of days ago in downtown La Grange, and as you look at downtown La Grange, those buildings are all only two stories, okay? There's, there's a four-story office aside apartment building, but the stories that are actually part of the business district are only two stories. So, you know, it just, it's just, this building is just going to be totally out of scale with anything else. And one of the things to consider is whatever decision you guys make, the village makes, this building's going to be there for a long time. We're all going to be gone and that building's still going to be there, and people are going to say, geez, how did that end up here? You know, primarily, this village, this, this village is a transit-oriented development community. I mean, it really wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the Burlington Northern. You know, if you go down and you go and look at all the other communities, it says one time was the end of the line for the Burlington Northern, and Burlington Quincy, I think originally, originally. And we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for that. You know, we, certainly twenty years ago, we were still talking transit-oriented development, okay? I certainly was not part of all the communications that you guys had recently that raised this thing from four stories to five stories, okay? But certainly, this was all looked at, and, you know, when you look at the, the character of the village, it, it's not, it's, this doesn't, this village does not lend itself to these tall buildings. If you go and look at a lot of these other villages that are out there that have tall buildings, they're on the peripherals of their, if you go and look at Elmers, where my son lives, okay? That village, if you go down York Road, none of those buildings are really tall, maybe a couple on the edges, there's bypass, it has a building, in fact, a, a tall building was built down there I was in, because I know somebody had moved in there one time, but it changes the character of the downtown area. And we only have a couple of streets that are downtown. And make no, make no mistake about it, this is, you know, the whole objective originally was when they did the zoning last time for the Central Business District, they didn't include the Burlington area near Harlem. You know, they figured that there were other needs, there were special needs for that particular area, and they didn't try to include that as part of the zoning that was being done for the Central Business District. So, you know, we, in fact, if you look at it, there's, there's peripheral areas and there's, you know, it's kind of a rear zoning hodgepodge in order to go and take and accommodate the needs that they felt were appropriate. So, like I said, the, this extra, this extra story is just uncalled for. The other thing that they were trying to promote, you know, one of the things I looked at is the, the public interest and things like that, is to try to go and make sure we had some type of business or retail on the first floor. You know, certainly, Pat, when he bought the property, was aware of the fact that there were zoning requirements for that property. It's not like he bought it in as a hardship situation where he didn't know that the fact that, gee, he's limited to four stories, if he can go and get him, get that approved, and that, that whole first floor needs to be business or, it cannot be residential. You know, I listened to all the conversations that took place regarding, let's try to get parking down and things like that, but having parking on the first floor addresses two problems. Not only does it address the parking problem, but it also addresses the problem of having businesses that other people might use or call on, on that first floor. If you had, otherwise you'd have to have professional or some type of other thing on that first floor. I, I just, you know, all the conversations that took place, nobody brought that up. So the thing is, is that if you took and you put the parking underground, you'd have to have a similar situation like you have at Village Center, where all of the first-floor buildings are business. And you'd have to have, you know, professional offices, doctors' offices, and things like that on the first floor. So that's really one of the bigger reasons, I would suspect, certainly Pat could go and confirm that or not, or any architects could, but it goes, it's really that particular issue. Then, also looking at it, even that, even though we only have a couple of things that might be business on the first floor, we're still going in and saying, well, maybe those things should be apartments also. So looking at what we're really doing here, is you're really giving approval to go and put a building in the center of the business district that has no businesses in it, okay? So this is not what the original intent was when they were doing the rezoning of the Central Business District. The idea was, was to try to... The idea was, was to try to encourage people to put businesses and other, uh, commercial structures on their first floor to be used. This building does not meet that criteria. Okay? So, uh, from that standpoint, there really is no other public use of the property other than the fact that, like I said, certainly you're gonna get more property taxes from it than you would, as you're, and you're getting right now. But it's not gonna really fit any, any, any aspect of the, of a public benefit. Okay? Um, I, let's see, I make sure, I, I, there was all, all kinds of different things. I had written notes a number of times as I wrote this, as I went through all this stuff. Uh, landscaping. You know, I always find it interesting when they come over here and we see all these wonderful landscape drawings. You know, Pat certainly has done a wonderful job. I've, I've gone by where he lives, and he has a wonderful landscaping in front of his house. He has done a wonderful job, and I've told him that. Okay? Very good taste, he really does. Um, but the problem is, is that as time goes on, one of my questions would be, what is the, um, what does the village have as far as a, a leverage to make sure that that landscaping is maintained? You know, certainly, my neighbors at Ten Burlington, originally, we're supposed to have a ten-foot, a five-foot green space between their property and mine. And originally, there were a couple of, a couple of things planted there, but not what was originally proposed. There were originally supposed to be a couple of small trees put in and things like that. They never were put in. Then one day, just like we had recently at the property, uh, the back of thirty-seven Long Common, a guy came in with a bunch of chainsaws and cutted all that, anything that was there. So now what we have is, as far as, uh, green space between me and Ten Burlington, is actually a bunch of stones, which haven't been maintained by the condo units at Ten Burlington. And I've actually gone out there and sometimes pulled weeds and things like that, just because it looks as bad as it does. Okay, which I shouldn't be doing, that should be maintained. So there's really no guarantee that what's being proposed as far as landscaping goes, uh, is actually gonna be maintained in the future. And the other thing that comes up is, as time goes on, there's a need for snow removal. You know, one of the things I wonder about is that how are they gonna address the snow removal issues of this property? Is it gonna end up in the green spaces and destroying all the plants? You know, and things like that. So the thing is, is that there's no real guarantee that all of these pretty drawings that are being made up are actually gonna be maintained at some point in the future, uh, as somebody either determines that the cost is such or the effort is such that they're not going to, not gonna maintain that. So certainly, I, like I said, I, I had that, that problem in the past. Uh, and I have the problem currently, because I don't have a green space, that five-foot green space, I have a bunch of stones. There's no, nothing that would stop them from doing the same thing there, unless there's some type of a procedure, and please let me know what that is. Okay? Let me see, what else do we have here? Um, one of the things that came up is, the differences between, uh, apartments and condominiums. You know, this certainly was raised, and it says, you know, we don't, you know, how, what's the difference between a co, a, a condominium and an apartment? You know, certainly, if somebody has a condominium, they've got some skin in the game and some interest that, uh, that property is going to be maintained, uh, issues with neighbors and things like that, there's condo association and the like. Okay? Uh, apartments are sometimes a remote control-type thing that's done by an association or something like that. And, uh, you know, one of the comments that was made is, says, is there a possibility that this would be low-income housing? So, you know, my son had mentioned me a while ago, and he lives in Elmhurst, and there's a lot of properties in Elmhurst. Elmhurst is kind of going through some of the same stuff that Hinsdale went through a number of years ago, where they had these buildings that were built right after World War Two. And they're kind of slab properties, and they're ripping those down one by one and rebuilding Elmhurst, just that way Hinsdale was done. And, uh, a lot of these properties that are, um, that are bought, you know, owned by real estate people end up renting these properties out. And a lot of these end up being what some people would call Section Eight, low-income housing, and that type of thing. You know, I looked into it, and one of the things my son pointed out to me was that depending on where you rent your property determines how much you actually get. So I actually started looking into it. I went to the CHA website, which is tied into a couple of other websites, and found out that the way this is done, I'm certainly sure we have subsidized housing here in Riverside. There's houses that are rented, there's apartment units. And I'm certainly sure that we already have, uh, what people like, what some, used to call Section Eight housing. And the thing is, is that you really can't control it. This is nineteen, this is twenty, twenty-three, it's not nineteen sixty. You know? And I, the, the, the ruling is, and this is out of their website, it says, note, the property owner cannot use your status as a voucher holder, to deny your, your tenancy. In the city of Chicago and throughout Cook County, property owners must consider the voucher as a source of income when determining an individual's suitability as a tenant. So basically, there's no way of saying that you're not going to have, if you have a, a apartment building, you're not gonna have low-income housing. I'm certainly sure that's some of the issues that we have in some of the other, some of the other properties in town, where we have rentals, and sometimes we have houses rentals, and sometimes we have apartment rentals and things like that. So, um, the, uh, the way it works is that, uh, if a person gets a voucher, and by the way, vouchers, if anybody wants to get one, you can't get it right now. But, um, you have to look at your income. And you get a voucher that's good for thirty percent of the rent. So if the rent is a thousand dollars a month, the voucher pays seventy, seven hundred dollars of that, and then you have to pay three hundred. So that's how that works. So there's really no way of guaranteeing, if you have a, a building like this, that you're not going to have, uh, low-income housing in there. And like I said, certainly, we've had issues like that. Yeah, keep in mind that this is gonna be there for a long time, and that it's in our Central Business District, and that it's not business on the bottom floor. Okay? Um, uh, street parking. You know, one of the things that you see as you go and look at Forest Avenue is that during the day, there's cars parked on the street all the time. You know, one of the things is, this is gonna end up being a detriment to other businesses in downtown Riverside, because what people are gonna do is, they're gonna take their, they're gonna take their cars out for some reason or another. They're not gonna put them away, they're gonna just park it in front. I think a lot of that's gotta take place on Forest, otherwise we wouldn't have as many cars parked on Forest during the day. You know, I just looked today, and certainly, uh, I just went mail the letter and walked past the property that we're talking about here. There's nine cars currently parked on that property. And most of the parking on Burlington is currently used. So one of my questions would be, is where are those nine cars that are parked on this property going to be when this building gets built? You know, somebody asked, he said, are they gonna go and use this parking that's already there? That's part of the parking, is that gonna be used for, for, uh, Pat's business? Okay? So I kind of wonder, you know, what's gonna happen to parking? We don't have a lot of parking in downtown, and, uh, I think that could potentially be a problem. Um, and I think the noise problem that was being raised over here is actually, there's a lot of delivery trucks for, uh, the restaurant. And certainly, I see those all day. Um, you know, certainly, um, you know, I, I, I actually wish Pat the best, I wish the restaurant the best. We certainly get a lot of extra noise that we wouldn't have if that building wasn't there and if the restaurant wasn't there. Okay? Uh, I think it does provide a, a, a place for the village. I think that the restaurant's very nice, and, uh, they have good food. We like your pizza. Okay? Um, very competitive. Uh, but we do get a lot of trucks through there, delivery trucks. And I think that may have been, which you may have been talking about, because actually, I'm right next to it, and he's probably only fifty feet away from it then. And that's where it's coming from. So it's not actually the management company or that that's causing that noise. That noise is from trucks that are doing deliveries in the building. Most of the other properties over there are actually professional businesses, so you don't have those delivery trucks. So I'm glad that there's delivery trucks, I guess, because I'm glad this business is doing well. And I know a lot of people in Riverside enjoy that restaurant, as they should. So, um, I think I've covered most of the things I have on the list here. Certainly, I'm open to answer any questions that anybody might have here, uh, regarding anything I said or any other thing. Like I said, I was involved in the original, you know, I was not on the original zoning board when this was coming, but I was pretty much at all the meetings when they originally were looking at this, and what the intent was of the zoning, uh, proposals that were originally there, which this, this building doesn't meet. It's, like I said, it's certainly bigger than it should be, certainly out of scale for a community like ours. Um, certainly would be nice if something was built there. Okay, but it would be nice if it was somewhat consistent with what the master plan is for the village, which just doesn't meet. So, that's, that's it. Anything, any questions? I would, I would be curious, given the fact that we didn't have, like I said, that there wasn't a public notice, uh, for the, for the three to four story, why would something like that not have to be? You know, and certainly, if it's a textual change, it didn't change the intent of the law. But certainly, adding a story to it, especially with all of the, uh, rigmarole that took place twenty years ago, and finally coming up with three stories with, with the fourth story, uh, but as a special use, why wasn't this given the same, uh, care? Or the same, uh, you know, same procedure that was done for a meeting like this, where we're talking about, uh, a building that's actually going up that doesn't meet all the, the current criteria? So I would kind of ask, uh, the village attorney, uh, why wasn't there notification sent out that that, that those, that actually took place to allow public, a public input on that?
I, I can't say that it wasn't.
Well, I can, I can tell you, I never received it. Certainly, all the people from Ten, Ten Burlington never received anything, and we would all meet that criteria. You were there in the beginning of the year. Did you ever get any notification? We never received. I don't, I don't think that proper procedures were followed with that.
I can address that.
Okay.
Sure. If you look at the memo, for those who have availability, it's pages four and five. I went through a pretty thorough rundown of what the process was. So, the changes to the zoning code to allow taller buildings in the B-two district were text amendments. You've got two types of changes to the zoning code. You change the text of the zoning code, or you change the zoning map. If you change the zoning map, that is where you send letters to property owners within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the property to be changed. That is the legal requirement, and that is what the village does. So that's why you received a letter for the rezoning for one of the parcels involved with this project. Um, so unlike, uh, zoning map amendments, text amendments don't require the village to send the mail notices, because the changes apply to either all properties in the village or all properties in a district, which is thousands of properties. So, uh, I didn't, so property letters, property owners didn't receive letters notifying of the proposed text amendments. Uh, the public was notified and invited to comment, um, through a, the years-long process of drafting and approving the amendments. So, I was involved in the tail end of this. So there was a virtual public, uh, open house in October twenty-twenty to obtain public, uh, input on the proposed amendments. Uh, they were the topic of numerous public meetings of a steering committee that was formed just for that purpose. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, the Preservation Commission meetings, and the Village Board. Um, information about the text amendment were, uh, was published on the village website. Legal notices of the amendments were published in the newspaper. Um, they were also the, the topic of several articles in the landmark. Every effort was made to involve the public in the process.
Except contact being affected owners. This property, this change didn't impact thousands of properties in the village. It, it impacted the Central Business District. Now, let me ask a question, okay? Again, I was not involved, so I just, let me kind of ask this question. Was this done in conjunction with the changes that were being done on Burlington near Harlem? Were those meetings related to that, or was it just, was this primarily, did they make those changes there first, and then go and take and try to, to copy those changes into the Central Business District?
Are you talking about the rezoning of the properties?
I'm talking about the, uh, when they redid the Central Business District. I mean, they went through an extensive process of review, and in fact, actually, you would never get the people that showed up in this room. They were using the room next door for a lot of those meetings, okay? Because there was a lot of interest. And it was the Homestead Society, there were people all over the village that were actually interested in this. Because it kind of, the Central Business District is a shared area for the whole village. Okay? So although we're taking and looking at, trying to make sure that the affected, the, the people that are most affected, uh, you know, are in, are, are in, are told about this, you know, I, I really think that, like I said, my idea of a textual, textual amendment, okay, is something that changes maybe the text, but not the intent. Okay? This changed the intent of the law. This added an extra story to the Central Business District. This was not a simple textual change. This was a, uh, a, something that actually changed what the character that, of the downtown area is. This should have actually had a lot more visibility from the standpoint of at least letting, uh, people know, uh, with a letter, like we're, like we're doing over here.
You did receive a letter for this application.
For this, I did. I'm not, I'm complaining, I'm not complaining about this. I'm complaining about going from, you know, everybody was, came, I, I, again, I've watched it three times, okay? And, uh, everybody's over here talking, they say, now, when did this get changed from? Why are we talking five stories? How, I thought it was always four stories, you know? So I had no idea that, that this had changed from four stories to five stories if you look at what you can actually eventually do. And, you know, I, I, I don't see this as a textual change.
It is.
Huh?
It is a textual change. And what Ms. Siren has described far exceeds the legal requirements in terms of, all, all we need to do is publish it. And she described a number of ways in which we make, let the public know. You may be dissatisfied with the state of law on the issue, but we've exceeded the standard of notice in this case.
Yeah, I, I do think, you know, although it may, you may have actually met the letter of the law, I don't think you've met the spirit of the law.
We exceeded the letter of the law.
Not the spirit. The spirit is, if you're gonna go take and do something that impacts the character of an area, okay? Then you really need to let people know that. And, you know, you know, like I said, I certainly, I know you guys went through it, and I was not part of this. I certainly attended a lot of these meetings in the past. In fact, I volunteered, you know, after I was not a trustee anymore. Not running for trustee, to actually participate in some of these, these different committees. But it was never, I was never selected, okay, by the, uh, by the appropriate people. But certainly, I know that there, I guess the next village board meeting is on the twelfth. And, uh,
December seventh.
Huh? Twelfth of December?
December seventh, I believe.
Yes.
Is it the seventh or the twelfth?
It's the seventh.
It's the seventh? Okay, 'cause I looked it up on, I, I, it did, online, and I actually said it was the twelfth. Okay, so it's the seventh?
No, it says December seventh online.
It does?
Yes.
Okay, maybe I misread it.
There's a section on the front of the, uh, the website where you can sign up for notifications and receive agendas of all the public meetings that you want to be notified of. It's right under, uh, Stand Form, there's a bell with a ringing symbol.
No, maybe I need to explore your website a little bit more. So I'll, okay, like I said, certainly, I'll, I'll make sure I show up at the village board meeting for public input and bring this, say this also. I mean, I think that, I guess that, everybody was confused. There's nobody that came up and says, well, I, I know, we changed that. You know? So, uh, any questions from me? So I'm saying, my, my point is, is that I don't think this should be approved. Okay? If you, if you haven't already figured that out. Sorry, sorry to hear, okay? So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak?
Thank you.[1724.33]
Thank you. My name is Mike Mulvahill, and I live at 200 Nut All Road in Riverside. Anytime there's changes, construction, some people are going to be happy, and some people aren't. I, I think the basic question is, is this going to help the community, help the village of Riverside? Maybe it won't help any resident, every resident, but it is an improvement to the village of Riverside. And I think the answer is clearly yes. The building at Ten Burlington was an improvement to the village of Riverside. It bought beautiful condominiums, kept some people who lived in town for years in the town, bought businesses to the town, bought employees to the town, bought people from outside of the village to the town. And, right now you have basically a vacant lot there, there used to be a drug dealer, a doctor dealing drugs out of there, okay? No other business would go in there. We had a store that was out of date, out of time, the Irish Store, beautiful store, but it wasn't making money anymore. So you now are going to have income for the village of Riverside. You're going to have an apartment building like we don't have in Riverside. We do have some apartment buildings that do have issues. Matt Buckley can tell you about that. This is a very different building. It's a green building, it meets the codes as, Ms. Miller said, it exceeds the codes. We exceeded notice. Maybe, you know, I don't read everything either, but the letter of the law is the letter of the law, and you went beyond the letter of the law. But this building, there's been a change to the rules, you can have a fifth-story building, it's set back, it's going to bring people to the town who are going to live in high-end apartments. The building is a handsome building, just like the Ten Burlington buildings are a handsome building. It's much more handsome than what we have there right now. Is this going to be an asset, a net asset to the village of Riverside? No question, okay? Is everyone going to be happy? No. I bought a home across from a park. Sometimes the noise at the park bothers me, but I knew that when I bought a home across from a park. I understand why the people who live on Long Common may be not like this, but they also bought homes that were up against the business district. They knew that when they bought their homes, okay? And that things can change in the business district, that new buildings will be built, old buildings will be torn down, new homes will be built, old homes will be torn down. We built a new home, we followed what the rules were, and things change. But, look at this building compared to what we have now, look at the money it's going to bring. It's going to bring residents who are going to spend money at the grocery store, okay, in town. They kept the local grocery store in this town, and a small downtown business. We have Scottwood, who enhanced the business, the Choo Choo, across the street. Pat and Mary have the restaurant. The downtown, I moved here in 2002, the downtown looks so much better now than when I moved here in 2002. We have more businesses, there's cars on the street at night, there's people who don't live in Riverside coming and spending money here. So, the bottom line is, is this a net asset to the village of Riverside? And the question is clearly yes. Is it a net asset for everybody? No. Is it a net asset for the, the value of my property? Is the restaurant, is all, yeah, it's a net asset for the value of most of the people in Riverside, the overwhelming majority of people in Riverside. And that's the basic question that you have to ask yourself. Are we much better off with this beautiful building, with people who are going to be paying high rents, who are going to be spending money in town, generating revenue for the village of Riverside, other than three empty lots that used to host a, a doctor who dealt drugs? And so, thank you for your time, and thank you for all the time you commit to the village of Riverside.
Thank you.
Guess I'm short. Hi, Deirdre Smith, 332 Gatesby Road in Riverside. Again, I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Mulvahill said. Thank you for your time and for your service to the commission. I will speak very briefly in that I am a Riverside resident for about 20 years. I have my two youngest children are now in college, and my husband and I are in a position where we're now deciding where we will go next, right? We're going to downsize potentially, and where will we live next? We've had several conversations about, we'll have to go to the city, we'll have to go to Hinsdale, or Elmhurst, or some of those communities, because there was nothing like this in Riverside. We have another home that we maintain, we plan to have a home in the south when our kids graduate from college, but our children were born and raised in Riverside and wish to stay in Riverside, and this offers us an opportunity, and we will be first to sign up for this building if we're lucky enough to have it. We plan to move into this building. My husband, who's a physician, and I'm a pharmaceutical executive, if there is potential live-work space, we would have a doctor's office, one who doesn't deal drugs in the town, where he could see, you know, patients, he's a rush physician, he would bring those patients into the village, who could potentially use any other businesses in the village. I want to stay in this town, and this offers a wonderful opportunity for us to stay in this town, to meet our children's needs, who don't want us to leave Riverside. So we'll be here for several more years, and this gives us the opportunity to do so without having to buy another home when we downsize. So I'm very appreciative to the Leonis for bringing something to this town, so people like us don't have to go to other towns, and we can stay in the town that we love. So that's really what I want to say.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve Rattuno, Tenny's Burlington. The last two speakers were very eloquent and very persuasive in my mind, and as some of you may recall, I was vehemently against this project last time. I'm still vehemently against this project, not this building, not having a beautiful place for people to rent, not having expanded opportunities for people to stay in the building so everybody could stay here, not five stories. There was immense pressure and negativity when the Tenny's Burlington got, got built as a four-story. Now you want to raise this to five stories. Now they want to raise this to five stories through an, is it a, is an amendment to the code, or is it a, just a variance?
Essentially a variance.
Okay. That means anybody in this town who wants to build a five-story apartment building in the central business district is going to have to get that approval, otherwise, the board would be considered violating the equal opportunity rights of another business developer. You may think that that is a silly argument, and today, it's not a plausible argument. But I can tell you, I've raised $6 million already about people looking to buy those buildings across the street, and tell the, the owners there, you'll have a nice, brand-new place for your business, and I can build a five-story building. I don't want to do that, I don't think it's, it's, it's appropriate for this village to go to five, five stories. Mr. Leoni did not build Tenny's Burlington, but he bought it, and the building has, the association has kept it up, the La Barra's is, is wonderful, et cetera, but it's, it's a four-story building, and it's still a large building, and people still comment on how large it is. Now you want to go to five stories, and there's no reason why we can't have a four-story building there. A very beautiful, elegant, four-story building. And that, you don't have, have a variance, you don't have to worry about somebody else coming in next year, next month, saying, well, I want a five-story building. And people say, is it Mr. Mulvett?
Mulvahill.
Mulvahill. You talked about having nice living quarters in a village like Riverside, and we never had that, and I, and I totally agree with you, sir, but if I was a developer, I'd say, well, Mr. Mulvahill's a perfect example, we should have a six- or seven- or eight-story building. What's the difference for another couple of stories? That's the slippery slope you're on if you approve this variance. So, I, I firmly believe you should approve this as a four-story building. Now I'm going to ask some questions. What were the cost estimates to do the underground parking?
That's private information.
No, sir, it's not. It's part of, it's, it's, it's part of what this issue is, because you could have a, an underground parking garage for this building. And so I think that's one of the, one of the considerations that this commission has to make, to say, well, we're going to allow a variance, when in fact, you could get the same units in a four-story building by building underground parking. So what, 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 what's the cost of that? Well, I, I respectfully ask the commission to get that information, okay? Something, and I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
John.
John, said that if we did underground parking, you'd, you'd lose four units? Are you saying you'd, you'd lose...
Four spaces and three units.
Three units? Can, you'd lose completely three units?
Yes.
And where would they be? Throughout the whole building, or just on the first floor?
I mean, if you lower the building, you just lose three units, I'm not sure what you mean by, where would, where would the loss of the units be?
No, my, my question is, why would you lose three, three units?
Because we need space on the ground floor for a ramp, we need space for, you know, other mechanical rooms, there's already two units there, so it's not like you can add units to those.
So you'd lose the, 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 with commercial space?
Those would still be there, but you could only get three additional units on that floor, but you would lose six by lowering the building, so it's a net loss of three.
It's a net loss of three. So the, so the, so you wouldn't have 22 units, you'd have 19 units, if you, if you built underground space. And I guess, I suggest to you, you should determine what, what's the cost of that to the village, to change, to have a variance to allow a five-story building. It seems to me that the five-story building is being asked, you're asked to do a variance, and I don't blame Mr. Leoni or his partners at all, because I would do this. I've represented many people before many boards, asking for variances over the 40 years that I practiced law. You're doing, you're doing it strictly for the convenience of the developer here to make more money. I don't, I don't think anybody should be denied making more, more, more money, but I don't think you should change the character of the central business district, and likely change the character in the future, because other people are going to, are going to want to do, do this. They're going to want to take those buildings that are across the street and, and, and work out a deal with the owners. They are very nice buildings, aesthetically, certainly not as nice as this, and, and I compliment the architects and Mr. Leoni for the aesthetics of, of, of the building. But that, that's what you're going to allow, developers are going to see that this village will allow a five-story building. Maybe they will press you for a six-story building, or the next commission for a six-story building. I think you're, 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 you're making, respectfully, you're making a mistake to allow this to be five stories, when it could be four stories, and all the people who want a nice place to live, because they're downsizing, would be able to move into the four-story building. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's David Sisson, I'm a member of the Board of Managers of the Village Center. As a neighbor to this development, we have, we, by the way, we defer to the wisdom of the Planning and Zoning Commission to, to whatever it is you deem best for the village in terms of approvals of heights and all these other details. Thank you for the extensive details which you have requested from the developer and made available to all of us. It's very interesting. I did have a, a kind of a technical question regarding permissible paving, and the extent, since we're neighbors and we kind of share a parking lot on the east side, would that, where would that permeable paving be? Would it involve part of our parking lot? I, I was confused by the drawings, but...
So the permeable pavers would be in this area, so this darker hatch, and then this darker hatch.
Okay, so not this access area here?
Wow.
Okay, so that would be kind of conventional paving as it is?
Correct, conventional asphalt.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. So, the only concern that the association has, the, of the Village Center Association, would be during construction and the access in these particular areas, since we share a parking lot, and we share access behind the building next to our, our neighbor. By the way, I live in the third floor, so when you take the fourth floor off, I'll, I'll still be okay. So, but, so the only concern, and I'm not sure it's within the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission, about construction access, but clearly, this is going to be a major project, heavy equipment and so forth, and we have some caution with regard to shared access and so forth. So, is that, does the planning and zoning concern itself with construction access, or is that another part of the village?
That would generally be handled with the permitting of the project.
Okay. So, perhaps you could, or I'm sure that that would be within the purview of the village to make sure that our parking area, both on the north side and on the east side, is not adversely affected by heavy equipment and so forth. So, I'm not sure whether you, the developer posts bonds for that kinds of things or not, but that would be our only concern, and, or not our only concern. The other concern would be that currently, this access area is used for parking for the restaurant. So I don't know what happens to those cars, because it's a popular restaurant, it gets filled up. So I guess, where do they go, pat on the street, or...
We would look into different options with, bring back a valet service, then utilize the park, the little parking lot.
Yeah, right, right across the street. Okay. So from an association perspective, and we represent the, the Village Center Board, those are our concerns, which were the, regarding construction and access during construction. So, thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you.
Chair Personette, again, could I address the construction management?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Sir? Sir?
I'm sir.
I just wanted to note that, so there will be a construction management plan for any construction that would affect neighboring properties, so noise, work, access, all of that will be discussed with staff prior to the start of the project, we have to coordinate that with you, so you can communicate with the residents.
Given the name, I would be anxious to represent the board in that regard.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everybody, I'm Ben Sales, 137 Blooming Bank Road. First, I'd like to thank this commission for the careful attention you've been giving to this project. I've been watching all of the meetings in which you've been doing this work, and it's been very gratifying to me, as somebody who is really involved with this whole PUD process from the beginning, the collaborative nature that I've seen between the commission, village staff, and the applicant. I think there are two things that we're very fortunate to have in this instance. One is, is that five of the members of this commission were there at the creation of this PUD ordinance. So you, not only are you familiar with the technicalities of it, you're also very familiar with the intent of it. The other thing that I think is fortunate is that the very first proposed PUD to come to the village comes to us from trusted neighbors, that we know have the best interest of our village at heart. So my view, having looked at the materials and watched your deliberations, is that this is exactly the kind of project that the PUD ordinance was designed to encourage. Going back as far as 2005, even before I was involved with village government, the village has been working hard to revitalize our central business district, particularly with an eye toward transit-oriented development. And not only does this proposal satisfy, in fact, I think exceed, the requirements for the PUD, it also fulfills a number of larger and longstanding village goals and objectives, and I'd just like to touch on a few. First is from 2013, the CMAP Central Business District Plan. Among the goals listed in that plan, I want to articulate three, and I'm quoting now from the Central Business District Plan. Building on transit-oriented development opportunities, green infrastructure protection and enhancement, and water and energy conservation and efficiency. The proposed plan directly advances all of those goals. Regarding transit-oriented development, Section 1.9 of the Central Business District Plan expressly states, and again, I quote, "While new residential construction is unlikely in the short term, there is a market for higher-quality rental buildings. Over the long term, the village should continue to support new residential construction in the form of mixed-use buildings or multifamily apartments and condominiums." Again, this project directly answers that call. Earlier this year, again, in cooperation with this commission... Earlier this year, again, in cooperation with this commission, the village board passed a number of amendments of the transit, for transit-oriented development. And that, I would like to emphasize, those transit-oriented development amendments further our legacy as the first conservation design community in America. So again, this plan pushes that legacy forward. And lastly, here in this past month, in November, the Riverside C-4 team, the Cross Community Climate Collaborative, reiterated its, the importance of transit-oriented development, and it said, and again I quote, "The village of Riverside should consider density in the approval of new projects, specifically along the BNSF and downtown Riverside." They went on to say that the village should encourage live-work opportunities, and specifically said that the village should be opened, quote, "increased height and density when considering those projects." So, we heard one of the benefits that the applicant mentioned tonight with regard to this building is the possibility for people to age in place, which is something that I also am very interested in providing for the village. But I would like to add a wrinkle to that. A survey done this year by an apartment organization, where every year they, they, they do a survey of the home ownership of millennials. This year, almost 25% of millennials said that they intend never to buy a home, that what they want is this. So not only do we provide an opportunity for aging in place, we also attract the demographic and answer the needs of a new housing trend that, again, is in keeping with our legacy. Now, I know that a few people have concerns about the fifth story. We've heard exactly the same kind, kind of concerns when the Village Center was built, and I would maintain that the Village Center now is just a seamless part of our central business district. I have a little bit different perspective than Commissioner Miller. I actually think that with this orientation, that the proximity of this, of this tower, which is really the only thing that's going to look like five stories, the proximity of that to the Village Center, I suggest relativizes the difference in heights. There's only a 14-foot difference between the Village Center and this one. And as for the water tower concern, whether or not somehow, and I'm not quite sure how, that this could somehow take away from the, the prominence of the water tower, the water tower is over 50 feet taller than the highest point of this building. So, I would just reiterate that this is exactly the kind of project that the PUD ordinance was intended to encourage. It meets or exceeds the standards of the PUD, and it's a project that will help further the legacy of Riverside as a conservation design village. So I encourage you to approve this PUD. And thank you for, again, for your considerable time and effort in this, and your service to our village. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Hello. My name's Frank Kresik, 382 Barton Road, on Fleischere, resident in Riverside. I should have got up and speak before Ben, because it's hard to follow that, but all of the numbers and, and that. I, I too think that this should be approved. I, I am looking and would like to see more business, work environment, work residential environments here. I, I disagree with the gentleman over here. It sounds that he's prejudicial to those folks that want to rent, and that seems a bit discriminatory to me. Not everybody can afford a condominium, but many people can afford a, a, a high-end rental. So I, I wholeheartedly disagree with that. I happen to work in transit, and this is exactly what folks want in a transit-oriented community, right? That they, they can have a really nice place, that they can walk to, get on a train and go downtown, and come back and work, and bring their friends here to enjoy our community. We do need to revitalize our community and, and grow our community, and I think we're doing that. I think there's a lot of things that have already happened with the restaurant and the, and the buildings, and I think this is just another opportunity to grow this building. Again, I too am an empty nester now, too, and I need to downsize, and I have an opportunity now that I didn't have before, right? I don't know that I will be moving into this place, but it is certainly something for me to look forward to. I also have another property somewhere else that I had just recently purchased, so I'm trying to move out of there. And by, because of my job, I have to live in a statutory community that the Chicago Transit Authority serves, and this is one of them. So I don't really have an option to go other places, further west in that. And I love this community. I raised my kids in this community. My kids will probably come back to this community, so I'd like to stay here as well. So I wholeheartedly think that this should be approved, and I think some of the other comments that were made about, you know, folks not doing their job and not, and sending out information about that, I totally disagree with that. I, I think all the appropriate steps were taken. This is a wonderful building. It, it looks great. It's going to add to our community, and it's going to continue to grow our central business district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just chime in on one issue you mentioned about the rental versus ownership issue. We, we will not be making our decision based upon whether the units will be rented or owned. It's just not a factor we consider. Zoning as a general proposition concerns itself with the use of property and the type of ownership. Of course, if clear on this, does that affect its use? You're living in it, and whether you rent or own, it's the same, so it would be inappropriate for this or any plan commission to recommend denial because of the form of ownership was not to their liking. So that will not be a factor we consider.
Let me give a thanks up here.
No problem.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? The commissioners have any final questions for any of our speakers? All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we will discuss amongst the commission. Thank you.
So I, I was not here for the last meeting where this was discussed, and I just had a couple of thoughts that I wanted to express, because I was not there for the initial conversation. My, my major holdup on approval is really that ground floor mixed use versus being, I'm sorry, the variance to approve it for residential use. I, I think that is the only piece that I see is against the spirit of, or I guess I shouldn't say the spirit of the law, the, the letter of our current usage, just as being part of the business district, I, I think it makes sense to have business within the building.
I believe with the recent TOD changes to the ordinance, that live-work units are permitted. So I don't believe they require any special relief to have the live-work units.
Okay, that was, that was the question that I had.
Yeah, that's, that's a recent change.
Yes, I'm sorry. Live-work units are permitted. That is perfect. Okay, great. Thank you.
But, but the applicant has requested some extra leniency to have the special use include potential for purely residential in those two units on the ground floor. And I agree with your concern as far as that goes.
Got it.
I do agree with that, and I think I would rather, my initial reaction would be to not approve that as a variation. Perhaps there could be something conditional of, in a certain period of time, we could recommend, if it's impossible to, you know, rent those as live-work units or business units, then it could come back in front of us as a special. I would much rather see it that way than in, in an initial approval for that. That's my opinion. Does that make sense?
Does anyone else have some thoughts on that specific issue?
If that were possible, I mean, that seems reasonable. You know, we, we have vacant businesses, and it took a long time for the Village Center to attract businesses. So I think it's a valid concern of the owner, but it does make sense to substantiate that the live-work is not marketable. So to put that on as a condition, I think makes sense.
We had extensive debate or discussion, sorry, it wasn't really debate, when we were talking about the TOD variations in the uses, and how do we do second-floor residential on Harlem, and I agree with Commissioners Peltier and Lang. To, if we are going to consider the fifth story as benefiting the TOD district, which was, as was noted by one of our commenters, and the whole point of the TOD discussion, we did want density, but we also put a caveat on that density, that that lower floor be something that draws people in, and obviously we can't control the actual presence of a business there, but we do want to reserve it for that use, and, you know, with all the variabilities that go into rentals right now, sorry, business rentals, I think it's a legitimate concern, and I would support it, support the restriction, or not, not allowing that variance. Sorry, I just mishmashed a whole bunch of words.
Any other general thoughts? We'll obviously go through all of the standards in, in detail, but...
Well, I have two other concerns, which again would just be to try and have some kind of binding condition regarding the energy efficiency issues and all the rest. There has to be some standard met, or some benchmarks met, which again could be this ComEd multi-family new construction workbook, which I propose only as a neutral arbiter of something that's being done throughout the ComEd areas and set of incentives, or something like that. I'd just like to be something binding as far as the energy efficiency commitments. But the second thing, I'm a little bit interested in exploring what the other commissioners think, is the parking area, the open parking area in the back? There is some issue with the need for, I mean, it's two things. It's that, I think there's been a legal determination by village staff that in the new lot, the lot that we rezoned last time, there are a few areas where there should be a 10-foot buffer, and there is not a 10-foot buffer for landscaping, and that would be on the, this sort of south edge, it's only five feet, and then, I suppose, on the, the north edge as well, although that's of less concern to me, because it's bordering a paved area. But on the other side, you do have residential lot, R1A, I think. And then if you look at the other parking area, which is four spaces, because one or two of them are ADA spaces, so it's only actually four parking spaces. When I, when I look at it, it looks a little, it's a little bit shoehorned in there, and again, because one of the ways that this building can, this building, this lot, these lots are not large enough to provide like a park for public access or anything like that. That's not what I'm expecting. But I'm wondering if the other commissioners think there would be any value to re, either reorienting that, that big block that doesn't quite have all the setbacks that, again, village staff has determined should have, and thereby reducing slightly the number of parking spaces and increasing the green space, and/or looking at that other block of four spaces, and perhaps trying to design a garden area that's a little bit more pleasant to look at without just that huge, you know, rectangle of parking that's sort of shoehorned in there. So perhaps eliminating one or two spaces there. And again, this would be in, in consideration of the fact that this is a PUD, you know, and that we're providing for the, all the other variations, particularly the fifth floor for this building. So have a little more green space in the back. If anyone else has any comments on thinking about...
In terms of at least the smaller lot, I, I wouldn't want to reduce that, seeing, seeing the EV location, seeing the ADA accessibility, I think it makes sense from what's been shown in the plan. I wouldn't want to reduce or move those spaces further away from the, the building.
Only some of them are ADA. I'm not sure if it's one or two spots there that are ADA. I don't think they're all.
Just one?
Just one.
Just one?
And a loading... So there's, so there's three parking spaces and one ADA space?
Three standard spaces, one ADA space. I kind of feel like that area's pretty green already. I mean, it's almost a 20-foot setback, and because it's behind the building, it's, you know, the return on, on that green space is kind of diminished, right? Because it's, it's really not visible from the street or by other, other people besides kind of the backyards. You know, I wonder maybe if it's possible to shift the larger lot a little bit further south, so that we can provide more than five feet along that north property line. That's probably more the landscape buffer that I would be concerned about.
Yeah, I mean, I think one thing that could be done, it would alter the size of that parking area, but if you had the parking budding up against the south edge there, again, which is paved area, and it's never going to be within decades and decades, any kind of residential area there, that would require some reorienting of that parking area, but maybe that would be more amenable, and then provide more landscaping on, on the south.
I'd, I'd be reluctant, I think, to lose any parking spaces. I mean, I think those are valid concerns, putting more, you know, cars on the street when people have guests or things like that, and, and, you know, people who move in a building are going to expect, you know, a certain level of parking, I think, for what they're paying. So, I mean, I'm, I'm actually fine with it the way it is. With respect to the energy efficiency issue you raised, you know, where we're, I guess what you're saying is we, we find like what would purport to be a neutral standard and compare it against, compare what they're doing against that, to see if it's meeting or exceeding requirements? Is that where you're going with that, or?
Well, something that we wouldn't be vetting it, but they would commit to, the applicant would commit to, we will meet these standards, and that is one of the considerations in approving a PUD. And not something that we're making up on the fly, that's what I'm, I'm suggesting some other neutral standard. No, there is, we are part of the C-4 now, and we are supposed to be encouraging energy efficiency and reduction of greenhouse gases by quite a great deal, and in fact, by bringing in more residents, this might increase our greenhouse gases. So having a highly energy-efficient building could be a positive in many ways, not only as an attractant to people who are also interested in transit and all that kind of thing, having a highly energy-efficient building, but it could also be yet another example of how Riverside is embracing the future in this way, having, you know, advanced thermostats, having, you know, very tight, energy-efficient units that save people money who are renting there, because they are not wasting energy as much and have more efficient appliances, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what I'm thinking.
I mean, I guess with respect to that, I'd say that, you know, from having, you know, I'm not a, an engineer or even, I'm a, I'm a reluctant appliance buyer at the best, but it, it seems that the, the standards from what the, you know, we were told by the gentleman over there, John, that we, we, they really do already exceed what would be expected in, in any type of apartment by quite a bit, and I'm also not sure that it's really our purview to decide. As long as they're meeting, as long as they're meeting standards, regulatory standards, either state, county, municipal, I, I'm reluctant to get into saying, you know, well, you know, this energy star oven is a better rating than this one, so maybe you should think about putting those in. It just kind of, it just goes a bit beyond the scope of where I really want to be at.
Well, part of the PUD process is that in exchange for getting variances from district regulations, one of the things we can consider is landscaping buffering that goes beyond what's required by ER code. Reduced use... what's required by ER code, reduced use of impervious surface materials, which they're doing, which goes beyond the code, the use of green building and sustainable development techniques, techniques including LEED or equivalent certification of structures. So that's where I'm going with it. And I'm not saying that what they're proposing right now is necessarily bad. What I'm saying is I would like it as a condition, that that is something that is a condition of our approval or that we recommend for the board's approval.
So I, I personally would be hesitant to tie it to sort of a third-party standard, not having all the details of what that standard might be versus another standard. But given that they've already provided some extensive information about the materials that they're planning on using and equipment and that, do you think it would be sufficient to say, to have a condition that they will provide the energy efficiency levels of the materials provided as part of their application or greater?
Yes, I think something like that, yes. That's, I'm just trying to...
It's, it's typical to have a condition that says, provide information concerning the energy efficiency of the final development that's acceptable to the Village Board.
Something like that. That's, I'm just looking to have that in there, you know, that that's...
And at that time, since we're still at a preliminary plan phase, we'll get a final plan because it's, we're still also, it's hard to define exactly what standard you'd want, but so it's a, you know, and certainly there are many people on the Village Board who are equally concerned with energy efficiency as used. So once we have a more definite plan, assuming this is recommended, the, their main connection would just be materials that are provided to the board that they find to be acceptable by whatever standard they deem appropriate.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks.
I suppose we can move on to considering recommendations. We were asked to make two separate recommendations, one regarding the exceptions that are requested and one for the special use for a plan development. Should the plan development one come first? Because we wouldn't have the exceptions without the plan development, or...
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, you can do it in either order, but yeah, that's, it would make sense to do that first.
All right. I think, unless anyone has any objections, I personally would like to consider the special use for plan development before we consider exceptions to the plan development.
That's fine.
All right. So in this case, I believe we need to address both the standards for special uses and the standards for plan developments. So there are a lot of standards to go through here. We typically do a motion before we go through the standards. So is anyone prepared to make a motion regarding the approval of a special use for a plan development?
So moved.
Second.
Is that a favorable motion?
Yes. That is a recommend, that is a recommendation to, forward this on to the Village Board.
Thank you. All right. So we'll start with the standards for special uses.
Can you, what's the page in the packet?
It's 104. It's toward the very, very end.
104, did you say?
Excuse me. So there are two sections that are kind of tied together. So the standards for planned unit developments is on page 105 of the packet, the PDF version of the packet that was posted online. It's section 10137, and there's a bold title that says approval standards for planned unit developments. That section refers to another section in the code, 10223F1 and 2, or F, which is the next page, 106, right below it. So the two are kind of tied together.
Okay. Just so I can read along.
Thank you. All right. Standard number one is that the proposed use is designated by the zoning ordinance as a special use in the district in which the use to be...
Let me add, for the standards for special use permit, we don't consider standards one and two because in conjunction, number two, the proposed use would comply with all applicable regulations. We're seeking to deviate, so we, we start with number three.
All right. Very well.
Could you repeat what you said?
Oh, so when, this is a standard for a special use permit, but we're doing a PUD. So what we're doing is actually deviating from some of the additional standards here. So when, considering a PUD, you skip standards one and two under section 10223F. So the first standard there you would begin with is the, the one, number three, the location and size of the proposed use. So the reason you obviously don't do 10223F2 is the proposed use will comply with all applicable regulations in the district in which the use is to be located. We're seeking to deviate from those regulations.
Got it. Yeah, it makes, I started off on the wrong page.
Oh, yeah.
And reading one and two, your logic makes sense. So thank you for the repetition and giving me just enough time to read those sentences.
All right. In that case, number three, the location and size of proposed use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved in or conducted in conjunction with it, the size of the site in relation to it, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it are such that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is located. I think the proposed exceptions certainly come into play in determining whether this standard is met, but taking the exceptions out of the equation, I would say that yes, it is compatible with the regulations of the CBD.
Yeah, I'm, this, this is probably the biggest, most important of the standards. And while I did have some thoughts on the additional story that this structure will bring to the village, it is, come to my own conclusion, whether or not anyone else wants to agree with me is up to them, that this, the density and the bulk and the use of the building is within the intent of the TOD zoning that we revised. It also is within the general, I'm losing my words here big time, I apologize for that. In the area that we're talking about with the Village Center right next door, we do have higher intensity residential, i.e. density, and so this is not out of place with that. And that not being out of place, combined with the TOD and the additional density that we're trying to support and encourage additional residents, I think is in conformance with what we're looking for.
Thank you for that.
Yes, I, I agree that the entire project as proposed after considering it for some weeks now, that it meets this standard, I think it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is located.
All right, we feel that standard three has been met. Number four, that the location, nature, and height of buildings, walls, and fences, and the nature and extent of the landscaping on the site are such that the use will not unreasonably hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings.
Yes, I think that's been met.
Yes.
Number five, parking areas will be of adequate size for the particular use, properly located and suitably screened from adjoining uses, and the entrance and exit drives will be laid out so as to prevent traffic hazards and nuisances.
I think the extra exhibits that the architect provided and engineer with the site, the line of sight diagrams, and the fact that the village will continue to review this supports that standard.
I was going to concur. I appreciated the extra exhibits for review.
Number six, that the proposed use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood. I don't see how it would.
I think it enhances it, actually.
Right.
Actually, we've heard from a number of current residents that they would be interested in being there, so it would, it would not harm the value.
Right. Number seven is not applicable as there's not been a prior application for a special use permit on this property. Then moving on to the approval standards for planned unit developments. Standard number one, except as modified by and approved in the final plan, the proposed planned unit development complies with the regulations of the district in which it is to be located.
I think by definition, that is true.
Yes, it meets code except for where we're granting variations, yes. Number two, the principal use in the plan development is consistent with any land use policies, plans, or studies approved or adopted by the village, the character of the village, and the village's historic landmark designation.
That's true, and we also have the relevant sections of the CBD plan of 2013, and that clearly supports multifamily buildings in this area.
Very true. Number three, the proposed planned unit development is in the public interest and is consistent with the purposes and objectives of this zoning ordinance and this chapter.
I think that's true. Yes.
Yes, the petitioner did provide an extensive explanation of the public benefits as they see them, and I was happy with what they provided. Number four, there is provision for adequate utilities, drainage and storm sewers, stormwater retention, stormwater detention, off-street parking and moting, pedestrian access, and all other necessary facilities within the plan development.
Yes, there is sufficient provision for...
That's true, and I'd like to add just a side comment about the utility access, and that is, by, I believe by law, the utility easements that everyone is mentioning exist without legal, they don't have to be on a plat. ComEd and the, the telcos and the communication people all have the ability to put poles up in that, along that property line to provide access and service to adjacent properties. So that is, utility access for other properties in the vicinity is not an issue either.
That's a good point. Thank you. Number five, the design of the proposed use promotes a safe and comfortable environment for pedestrians and individuals with disabilities. That seems, these seem to have taken particular care in addressing this item, especially with respect to individuals with disabilities.
Yes.
Yes, I think that's met.
All right. Is there any additional discussion on the motion to recommend approval of the special use for a plan development? Hearing none. Ann, could you call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Palteer?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Lang?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennigan?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, I need to go back and get the language on this one. Do we have a motion whether the board should grant exceptions to the district regulations considering the standards, including the design characteristics and amenities that are considered public benefits when reviewing the exceptions to district regulations? So...
So moved. With, sorry.
I just have a question. Should we be considering these individually as opposed to all as a group?
Generally, they're considered all at the same time. If there is something, if there's a discussion that you would not like to approve one, but you know, or you want to pull one out, we can have that discussion, but the motion would be to approve the application with all the relief that they've requested.
Oh, I was going to motion to approve with the exception of the ground floor residential.
That's, you can also make that motion.
That's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Just a moment to write that down.
So regarding the motion is to approve all the relief requested except for approval of the ground floor residential request.
So now we'll be reviewing the standards for exceptions from district regulations, which is section 10-13-5. So exceptions from district regulations may be granted if the village board finds that such exceptions, number one, enhance the overall merit of the planned unit development.
Taken together, all of these items, they make this, the structure possible within the property lines that they have, as well as the access and parking requirements. I'll defer on commentary on some of the aesthetic items like the fiber cement. I don't have an opinion on those.
I would agree with the overall statement there. Any other comments on number one? Number two, promote the objectives of both the village and the developments.
My previous statement holds, and I believe this does.
Yes, we have the example of the 2013 Central Business District Plan, as well as the recent TOD text amendments that sort of tell us what the objectives of the village are in this case. Number three, enhance the quality of the design of the structures and the site plan.
I think overall, we can say that's true, although the glaring issue is the fifth floor, so some people might not find that that enhances the quality of the design. I mean, that's a very aesthetic judgment.
Yeah, overall, yeah, you have to...
Overall, I think with what's been presented to us, yes, I think what the applicant has presented enhances the quality of the design.
Number four, that enable the development to offer environmental and pedestrian amenities where applicable.
The plan does add in a number of green features and the proposal to eliminate the ground floor residential unit variation is intended to enhance the pedestrian appealing, I can't think of the right word, appealingness of the development.
All right. Number five, will not cause such an adverse impact on neighboring properties so as to outweigh the benefits of the development.
I think that standard has absolutely been met. That's not, say there aren't some adverse impacts, but I think the project outweighs any such in my mind.
Number six, are compatible with the land use policies, plans, or studies approved or adopted by the village board, the character of the village, and the village's historic landmark designation.
That's true, and we've already noted that that was part of the 2013 CBD...
Text amendment?
Text.
And that they provide a public benefit to the village. I don't think I need to read the entire subsection B.
No, no, those are all just examples of what public benefit could be.
Thank you. That they provide a public benefit to the village.
I think, I mean, I think it absolutely does, and we've heard from numerous people. I don't think I could say it better, better than anyone did, but the, the addition of a, you know, a higher-end rental building with the potential to bring longtime residents and newer residents to enhance the downtown, I mean, to me, it's just massive public benefit.
All right, so that's...
Yes, and I think in consideration of all of the details that have been prevented, presented to us in our, in our record, you know, including, again, efficiency, including the landscaping, including all the other things, the space in front of the building, all of those things, that it is a public benefit to the village.
All right. That is all the standards for the exceptions. Is there any additional discussion? Ann, could you call the roll?
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Palteer?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Lang?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennigan?
Aye.
Motion passes. So this will next move on to the Village Board for a final decision.
One moment, please. There was a comment about possibly attaching a condition to that, now we've approved it, do we want to attach the condition that the applicant provide the Village Board with information concerning the energy efficiency of the building that is acceptable to the Village Board? So if someone wants to attach that...
Make a separate motion?
You have to make a separate motion to attach that condition.
I move... I move that this commission add that as a condition in our recommendation to the village board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ann, could you call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Pallateer?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Lang?
Uh, no.
No?
No.
Commissioner Matthews?
No.
And Commissioner Hennigan, or Chairperson Hennigan, I apologize.
Aye. Motion passes.
So this will, as I said, this will go forward to the village board?
Yes, I believe the intention is to bring that forward on December 7th.
For the December 7th board meeting?
Yes, which will be next Thursday, 7 o'clock here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next item is information item, the cross-community climate grab collaborative response to the preliminary list of initiatives.
Sure. Just take a second while folks... During our special meeting on November 9th, the commission was provided with a preliminary list of initiatives for reviewing commentary with the intention of having, inviting the commission either individually or as a commission to make a comment on those initiatives. And at your seats tonight, Chairperson Hennigan provided some draft language for consideration. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I apologize. I didn't have this earlier, so you didn't have a chance to read it before the meeting, but give everyone a moment to take a look. My intention was just sort of to try to match up the initiatives of the C4 team with what the zoning ordinance says our sort of mission is. So once, once we get to a point where we like or totally dislike, or however we feel about this language here, so is, is it appropriate? What, what do we do with it?
Oh, so the, if the commission makes a recommendation, we would provide that to the C4 commission, and they may choose to also attach that and provide that to the village board as well. But this is providing feedback effectively.
Okay, yeah, okay. So we could move to adopt it or accept it or something like that?
Sure, move to forward, forward your comments to the C4 initiative and to the village board.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Sure.
General feedback I had, looking at the C4 initiative, is there's far too many. 32 is unachievable. I, I, not over time potentially, but I would like to see, just knowing the speed of government and the speed of other areas, that three priorities for 2024 would be a better starting point, and from there, making those key underlying components for the various committees in Riverside, I would view as a potentially more achievable goal. There's certainly elements in here that I think we should keep in mind at all times, and they do fit the spirit of the village, but to try and eat the elephant in one bite is a mistake. I think that leads to it being diminished overall, and it lacks power.
I agree 100%. That was my first thought. It was like, God, there's a lot on here, and they don't mention anything about emissions in China, which would probably be the most problematic issue. But, so I don't know really what we're going to be able to, so I don't know what good that does. I mean, do we tell them that, that we think you should cut this back to 12 initiatives or something, or, I mean, is it really, is anyone going to care? But I mean, I just, I just wanted to reiterate that, that this is, you know, enormous.
I agree with that. And my understanding is that this may be, like, it was coming to us as a decision maker, and then it's going to be refined, and then go out sort of the public, so that all of our residents can see it. So I totally agree that there should be something in there about how are these things going to be prioritized? Like, what are the criteria that will be used to prioritize them? And then, like, how many are we going to, as the village expected, or whoever is expected to tackle this in the near term, in the next year or two, or whatever? I think, because otherwise, I don't think it's a very useful document for the public, for the citizens, the residents, to even, it just looks like a long list of things, some of which are of less value, you know, hence the need to prioritize. But I agree with the statement is what Commissioner Hennigan wrote as far as, oh, the way that many of these initiatives could be, you know, implemented in a way that's consistent with our zoning ordinance and that we could assist in if we're requested to take action.
Agreed. I did not mean to diminish the document.
Well, your work is fine.
Well, I think it would be a good idea then to add a statement that we would like to see some prioritization of the initiatives that are presented to make the document more useful for all users.
That's fair.
And if there are any, if I could ask if there are any priorities that stood out to all of you that you thought should be prioritized through that process?
I, you know, I think we deal in, certainty isn't the right word, but we deal with things that are in the here and now, you know, that we want to do this. I mean, a lot of this is, is just pie in the sky sounds pejorative, but I don't mean it like that, but that's really what this document is at a certain level. There's nothing specific for us to, to pin our hats on, like, I mean, I, I, I mean, I, you know, yeah, pedestrian paths, right? That might be a zoning issue, but it's not one yet, you know, it's not something we're addressing. There's nothing, I wouldn't even know where to start, honestly, so...
John, I think the words we could use is, it's very forward-looking.
Nice, yes, yes.
And there are elements that we will look at as we do our variances or approvals of PUDs, where these things do come into play. You know, the indoor civic infrastructure, the gathering spaces, I mean, they're actually housing security for all Riverside residents. That you could argue that more multifamily with smaller square footage is a great way for someone to try and downsize and still stay in the village. So I think these are things that we can keep in mind as we, as we look at our approvals.
Yeah, sounds good to me. Okay. Any other thoughts? In that case, should we move to forward this recommendation to the C4 team?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Ann, please call the roll.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Pallateer?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Lang?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennigan?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. With that, our next meeting will be on December 18th, a Monday night meeting.
Just as a note, we do not currently have any applications before us, so it's potentially could be canceled. So just, I will let you know as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. Do you know when we might know for certain?
I hope to inform you by the end of next week.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.